All right, I'm going to be calling this meeting to order. Does anybody have the time though, because I don't have my phone in front of me?
Four or five?
Four or five, thank you. Four or five P M. And we will start with our opening exercises. I did want to let everybody know David Sandoval is feeling under the weather, our board president, so he will not be here today and I will be taking over as clerk. So we will start with a moment, oh, sorry.
Ms. Ewing?
Oh, yes, and Ms. Ewing is running a few minutes late. So we will move forward with our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. And I wanted to see if we could keep our prayers and thoughts for a student that recently passed away in our district from Sunset Heights Elementary and also the families regarding the school shooting this week in Nashville. So if Dr. Bill Sworson, if you'd like to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Yes, ma'am. That last part I want to do is sound much. Focus on the end game of raising your kids, the long game of raising your kids. And that means your mind, your focus, shut down your distractions and focus on what you're supposed to be doing. Where you can literally help your kids with a heart to price is intent. And we can't feed them if we don't embody that ourselves. So that's, that's a little.
All right, so we are going to move now on to number three discussion items. We have the 3.1 Citizens Advisory Committee update. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Governing Board, Cabinet, and our guests. Tonight we have Ms. Michelle Myers and Mr. Kevin Molino here, just to provide the board an update on our Citizens Advisory Committee process as we head into the spring or are in the spring, heading into the end of the school year.
Yes, well, well, thank you and good evening, Madam Clerk, members of the Governing Board, Dr. Reynolds, Cabinet, and community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the work that our Citizens Advisory Committee has been doing over the last few months. And you'll recall that our Governing Board back in October, on October 17th, we had a study session and there was an initial update and review of work that the Citizens Advisory Committee has done in recent years regarding calling for bond elections for our community to consider. And then in November, on November 10th, our Governing Board did reconvene the Citizens Advisory Committee to study current district needs as well as dollar amounts and categories for projects for possible bond authorization. And so tonight I'm going to touch base on that work leading up to the reconvening of the committee, a summary of the committee members, as well as work we've done to date with the meetings that have taken place, our remaining meeting schedule, and of course questions and next steps. And so in October, we did review that our 2012 bond has wound down and Peoria Unified does not have a new bond authorization in place. We looked at our capacity for a new bond program as well as our tax rate and our ability to fund projects in the future if a bond were to be approved, as well as possible election dates, which is November of 2023 for the next opportunity where there could be an election related to a bond authorization. And then, of course, in November, on November 10th, our board did review past committees and then reviewed recommended committee members for a 2023 Citizens Advisory Committee and took action to bring that committee back into service to evaluate needs and to make ultimately a recommendation to the Governing Board. And our committee consists of 11 members and they're listed here on this slide. And they represent not only our community but also stakeholders here in the districts, a mix of parents, community members, as well as educators here in the Peoria Unified School District. And we set six initial meetings and you can see that we have had four meetings to date. In fact, the most recent meeting took place on Tuesday of this week and we have two additional meetings scheduled. Our meetings do follow the requirements of open meeting law, so they are open to the public. They take place here at the district office and they start at four o'clock each time we meet. And so with our first meeting, that's always the opportunity for us to orient our committee and especially new members to provide welcoming comments, Dr. Reynolds spoke at the first meeting, as well as to help our committee understand what their purpose is, which is to not only consider needs related to a bond election, but also if it is the recommendation of the committee to the Governing Board to call for an election, that they would also recommend the dollar amount and the projects that would be included in that bond program. And of course, we reviewed open meeting law and some of the requirements under policy for our committee as they started their work. I also provided an overview of School Finance 101. There was a presentation related to how we are funded. And we also reviewed our most recent bond in 2012 as well as past Peoria elections. And in recent years, we have had three elections to date after our 2012 bond, which were in 2016, November 2016, 2018, and 2020. And as, as our board knows, we've not been successful with those last three attempts. Second meeting really started to build the understanding related to bonds, property taxes, school facilities board, as well as an opportunity to ask for a public opinion survey, survey, which we've done in the past, not only with Citizens Advisory Committees, but as a district as a whole, to have current information from our community on how we're doing or needs and priorities that our community has. And also at that meeting, Mr. Molino walked through current transportation needs related to our buses and student transportation vehicles. Moving right along, we'll then go to the next slide. March 7th was our third meeting and we had a comprehensive presentation from Applied Economics regarding demographics and projections for the district. And later in our presentation today, Mr. Molino will provide a summary of the information that was shared during that report from our demographers. We also provided an overview of the study that took place in 2020 where we looked at facility utilization and assessment district-wide, identifying future capital project needs as well as opportunities related to school utilization. As we walked through that, as well as reconciling how we've continued to fund some of those priority and essential projects that were identified during the study with remaining 2012 bond dollars as well as capital funding and other capital eligible funding sources. And at that meeting, Mr. Molino walked through technology needs that the district has. And then most recently, just this Tuesday, we had a review from Mr. Molino of the district's facilities master planning program as well as an update on land availability for a high school. We also then looked back at what we've covered to date as far as capital needs and then provided a multi-year review of property taxes in Peoria Unified, especially our secondary property tax related to our 13% MNO override as well as our outstanding bond sales and the fact that over the years, our combined secondary property tax rate has been declining over time. I will say that at the February 21st meeting, we also spent time looking at the district's bonding capacity as a whole. And in fact, at this point, this summer, after our July 1st payments, we will have $153 million of outstanding bond sales. And our bond tax rate will be 82 cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation in fiscal year 2024, and then that will decline to 54 cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation in fiscal year 2026. The district has $560 million of available bonding capacity and our bond credit rating is AA negative, standard and poor, which is a very good bond rating for a school district. And so at that meeting, we identified opportunities for a range of bond programs from a dollar amount perspective, from anywhere from 150,000 on up and at what point would there be a tax increase or tax rates remain the same, where there wouldn't be a tax increase because that's important to our committee as well to evaluate property taxes. And again, that, that starting point now is going to be addressed as we come back and look at the needs covered to date. And so at the end of Tuesday's meeting, we walked through and revisited some of the priorities. I mentioned that assessment, the study from 2020 that identified not only priority and essential projects in the next five years, but over 15 years in the cost. And of course, there's been inflation impacting construction in recent years. And so we've updated those projections for a 10% inflation factor and our updated amount taking into consideration projects that we funded from available funding sources, remaining 2012 bond program dollars is just under $93 million. Transportation needs are $15.6 million. Technology, $35.3 million. And then facilities master planning, including safety, restroom repairs and upgrades, auditorium repairs and upgrades. And then, of course, what is the cost of new construction and land availability? You'll note the cost of land has gone up. It used, it used to be in a range of 13 to 15 million. It's now 32.6 to 35.9 million for a high school parcel, which is typically 50 acres. You'll recall that the district does receive our elementary parcels through developer assistance donations, but when it comes to building a high school, which is typically around 50 acres, the district purchases that parcel. And we recently learned, and this was provided to our Citizens Advisory Committee, that a parcel that has been earmarked by developers for a high school in the northern portion of the district near Vistancia, El Mirage Road and Vistancia Boulevard is actually no longer available. And we did include the purchase of a land parcel for a high school in our last several bonds. So we have tried to secure a parcel, but we just got that update and that information was shared with the committee as well. With that, I'm going to now turn the presentation over to Mr. Molino and he will review the demographic update that the, that the committee received on Tuesday. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, members of the Governing Board, Dr. Reynolds, Cabinet, and guests. As part of the process for the Citizens Advisory Committee, we contracted Applied Economics, a demographic company just like Ms. Myers mentioned, to update our demographic and enrollment data. They worked very closely with Mr. Moss and his team during this process. The scope and process that Applied Economics follows consists of them looking at over 10 data, different data sets. Some of these include geographic distribution, alternative providers, and by these I mean charter and private schools, just schools of choice that are available to parents. And then also the population, birth rates, household and housing data, and then different aspects of the economy and the housing market. I'm going to go ahead and provide you a summary of what you will be seeing in the next few slides and just an overall summary of the results of the study. It's basically our enrollment keeps shifting from the southern and central regions and shifting to the northern regions. Our overall enrollment stays constant, but with a slower growth rate and our service rate to our school age population is decreasing with a percentage of students that choose other alternative providers increasing. So it's pretty much the same data that we've known for the last few years, that our central and southern areas, that population is aging out, families are moving to the north side and that's where our population is increasing. But the amount of students that are choosing private and charter schools percentage-wise is also increasing. Applied Economics starts their analysis by analyzing over 400 smaller grid areas, so they don't just look at the district as a whole first, they look at each individual grid. And then based the projections based on those grids and then they aggregate it for the entire district. And as we continue, we, we still and we will continue to view the district as four distinct areas. Area one is south of Grand, area two between Grand and Bell, area three between Bell and Highway 303, and then area four is north of Highway 303. This slide shows 23 years of 40-day headcount for the district. You can see that we peaked in the 2007, 2008 school year and then because of the recession, we started to slow decline. And then right up to the pandemic, we were starting to see an increase in our 40-day headcount. With the pandemic, we started seeing that decline again and that's where we're at now. This map shows our student density and it's a great picture of the four distinct areas of the district. But one thing that you'll notice in summary from Applied Economics is that we have roughly around 4,4800 students that are from outside our district, that they come to us. But this is then offset by over 12,000 or 11,800 students that are from inside our district that are choosing charter and private schools. So it's kind of offset. For out-of-district enrollment, it has also been in a decline. So this graph shows you the last five years going back to 2017 and you'll see that it's just, we've had a decline. That's where we peaked and we've had a decline of out-of-district enrollment. This map shows the change in enrollment over the past six years with blues showing declining, red, shades of red showing increase and growth, and then white in shades of gray being neutral or no change. And as you see, it's kind of what we've been seeing for the last few years, that southern and central area, areas one and two, and even parts of area three, kind of where Frontier, Coyote Hills are and Apache Elementary School, it's just mostly blue where it's been declining with the hypergrowth in the north. The quantity of alternative providers such as charter and private schools has increased over the past 10 years. There are currently 23 charter schools and 11 private schools within our boundaries or within one mile of our boundary. And combined, they are servicing over 12,000 school age children. This map shows the locations of these alternative providers. And you'll, you'll see our boundary lines, the school district boundary lines in white and then you'll see the ones that are outside the white, they're within one mile of our This map shows, it's similar to the one you saw last year that shows the potential for new developments and stays constant with past demographic studies and growth in the north with single-family developments and then infilling and multifamily housing in the southern and central areas. Enrollment projections of school age children for the next 10 years shows a growth of around 4,200 students, but the data shows that out of those 4,200, only 900 will become or be enrolled in the school district. Our service rate for school age population will continue to steadily decline over the next 10 years. This table shows that over 20 years of historical data and 10 years of projected data, the shades of blue are declining enrollment per grade level while the shades of red show increase in enrollment. Most of the alternative providers offer K-6 or K-8 services and as students are entering the high school years, they want more of a comprehensive environment that includes the arts, CTE, athletic type programs, just to name a few. And that's where we see the shift from a charter school and those students as they move into middle school and then moving into the high schools that they want those added This map summarizes the shift in projections for the next five years and it's, it's been, it's aligned to what we've been saying and seeing for the last few years, where area one and area two are in decline, hypergrowth in area four. This table shows that six years of historical data with 10 years of projected data for our elementary schools. It stays constant with what we've been planning for, with Lake Pleasant Elementary School being our hotspot and most critical boundary region that we need to address. The schools in dark blue are on the central region of the district or area two and they will continue to have declining enrollment for the next 10 years. This is a similar data set for the high schools and the main thing that I want to point out is not that Liberty High School will continue to grow, but its data has changed and has slowed down. In past enrollment studies showed that Liberty was crossing that 3,000 student mark in the 2027, 2028 school year. The new data shows that now it will not happen until 2031, '32, so four years later. The two high schools in blue, Cactus and Peoria High School, are both in area two and they will stay constant with enrollment with a small decline over the next 10 years. In summary, areas one and two will continue to see declining enrollment and area four will continue to see growth. There are currently no alternative providers in area four. And one, one aspect that Applied Economics mentioned is that the projections for area four could be drastically impacted by who provides additional services in that area. If a charter school or private school opens up before we open up the next elementary school, that will impact our numbers even greater.
Administration previously shared in November when we started the process to reconvene the Citizens Advisory Committee that we would keep the Governing Board abreast of the committee's work with updates following each committee meeting through a Friday report, which we have done to date as well as today's study session. We are on track to meet the deadline that we set when we started this process for the Governing Board to receive a final report and recommendation from Citizens Advisory Committee on or before the second Governing Board meeting in May. And then with that, we will conclude the presentation and Mr. Molino and I are both available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you both so much for the presentations. Appreciate it. So I'll go to each board member if they have comments and questions. Ms. Ewing?
Sorry. I wanted to go back to the slide. I'm trying to see if it's this, what slide number? It's the, it's the blue demographic. I don't know what page that is. Oh, four. So can you talk to me a little bit more about that decline that I'm seeing over 2023? Because I see we went way up in 2001, went way down, came back up, and then there was this big, huge drop, 21, and then it looks like what's projected for 23, going way back down again. So am I seeing that correctly, that it's back down? Because I guess, and then if I, and then if I take a look at the out-of-district enrollment on page six, I'm seeing that those have went way down. And then I know that you said that we see a huge increase once it comes to high school, right? So there's that justification for the need for the high school, but I was trying to look really quickly with the numbers. When we're seeing the decline in that enrollment, does it, is it the middle school area, that, you know, the fifth through eight that we see most of that decline? Because I, sometimes I think of the charter schools that at least when my kids were at Vistancia, we would see the kids move out at that fifth grade, fifth, sixth, seventh, and then they, they would move to the charters and then they would come back and they definitely came back in, in the high school. So I'm just wondering if, if the decline in that enrollment, because I want to make sure that if, if we should go out for two schools that we have, two elementary schools that we have the population, the, the need, the, the number of students to fill those schools.
Mrs. Rooks, Mrs. Ewing, and I'll answer the question and then I'll defer to Mr. Moss in, in the research and planning department in case I misspeak. But the decline in enrollment is constant throughout the entire district. So it's not just in the south and central area and it's not just in certain grade levels. If we look at... So here, for example, where it's red, and I'm trying to see the year, I don't have the best eyes, but I think that says 2022 and '23. Even though it's constant that there's red for the high schools, it's just a shift that the growth of Liberty High School is offsetting the decrease at Peoria High School and Cactus High School.
Okay. So as far as the way that, because it's, it's counted overall?
It's counted overall.
So then, okay. All right. All right. Okay, thank you. I think that's all the questions I have for now.
And just to...
No, go ahead.
You had, you read your question around the decline in 2021?
Yes.
And that decline was due to COVID.
Okay.
Ms., Mrs. Hill, you want to go?
I guess the two questions I was going to ask are, as far as the, you had mentioned a category for the charter and the private schools, obviously drawing some of our enrollment away. Are homeschool and online, like Primavera and some of those included with that or are we not, do we not have any numbers for those specific students?
Mrs. Rooks and Mrs. Hill, the, it includes all charter and private schools. So if, when Applied Economics, and I'll ask Mr. Moss this question, when Applied Economics pulled the data from the Arizona Department of Education in regards to online schools, I'm not sure if that, that data was counted or if it was only the physical schools within our boundary.
They're required to register, some do, some don't, but we would certainly have the ability to track anything that's a charter school. Primavera, for example, online schools, what else would be tracked, but the home schools are more difficult to get a number on.
So just out of curiosity for the home schools, if you, if they have, obviously registered, which I would, I would assume most of them have just because it's, it's law, but do we, do we have, do we have an account for them at all or do we just not really?
You know, in the, members of the board, certainly that's going to be something and I'm going to tell you that my first indication was, we got an email the other day that talked about the empowerment scholarships and the amount that that has been exceeding what they projected. And so it is one of the new things that I will go back to Applied Economics and say we need to start putting that factor into this because it's, it's something that far exceeded what was projected and I think it is one of the factors that's impacting our schools. Do we have information on it now? I would say probably be very difficult to get.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just curious because I know that there was an uptick with homeschoolers during COVID, that quite a few parents decided to take on homeschooling. So I was just wondering if we had factored that in, but if we can, that might be something to look into just to see, you know, what those numbers are in relationship to the kids that are actually going to public. And I was also wondering, I've kind of brought this up before, but I'm still always curious because it's kind of coming down the pike. Is the, are we at all aware or have an idea of how the voucher program might affect the enrollment? You know, I was bringing it up because, you know, it's coming up and it would, I think, impact us on some level. Do we have any idea or are we just going to see what happens?
That's, that's what I was referring to and that's, that's the number that we're really tracking is the, the voucher program and the empowerment scholarship being. is the voucher program and the empowerment scholarship being able to take that money and go to certain places. And I think that the first indication that that number was bigger than, than what was expected came out, I think, a couple of weeks ago when they talked about the dollar value being much higher than what it was projected to be. And so we'll, we'll start looking at that and get that information and break it down by school, by district, by whatever. They'll start identifying those students for us.
Great, thank you. I think, at least my own perspective, I don't think that, obviously, it's been utilized much yet, but I think come this fall is when we'll really start people, see people start utilizing the voucher program because it'll be the start of the first year in the fall for people to actually have the opportunity to start utilizing the voucher program. So I was just curious if we have any idea, but again, you never know until you're there. So it'll be kind of interesting to see how that pans out. But, but thank you. Those were my questions.
All right. Dr. Bill Sworson, any questions?
When you say alternative providers, does that also include neighborhood public schools outside of our district? So students who may choose to go to a surrounding public school district?
Mrs. Rooks, Dr. Sworson, I believe the answer to that is no. It was based off only, and I'll look at Mr. Moss to see if I'm correct, but the way I read the report was only charter schools and private schools.
I'll add that, what, one of the ways that we calculate this is based upon, they calculate basically a number of students who exist in the district or in an area. And then they say, how many of those kids go to your schools? And that gives us a capture rate, and that capture rate doesn't try to, so that capture rate, and let's say it's 75% of the kids that live in that attendance area go to your schools, they try to account for as many of the other 25% for us, but they can't always identify where every single one of them goes. So we lose some to other districts, we get back from other districts, but we do use that capture rate, which encompasses, and they try to identify the other 25% piece.
So discerning if community members are choosing private schools versus other public schools, that data would not be readily available? Because they're all lumped into, we just didn't capture them?
Well, that's, and that would be, so the enrollment there would be, they can get a general idea, and I'll use an example of the, the map of the charter schools. They can tell you that X number of kids went to charter schools. Do they know exactly what area they came from? No. But they can show you that when the charter school enrollment goes up, that we would assume that most of them come from the area around you. So do we specifically identify them? No. But can we identify them in general to where they're going to be? We can, that's what they're trying to do for us.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just had probably like one question. On the slide that had, I saw safety. There was on there of how much the amount was looking at for that. I don't remember which slide it was. Right, yep, right there. So what is that facilities upgrades and repairs, the safety category? What are you looking at for that for each school?
Mrs. Rooks, during that, we have taken the SEPTED assessments, or the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, that we started before COVID. We've aggregated that data along with Mr. Reese, and the SEPTED assessments are being performed now, will be completed by June 30. And the categories that that includes, and I'm trying to picture the spreadsheet that is in my mind, is front office vestibules, and it includes fencing. So, for example, if you've been to one of our high schools, you walk in and you're in the safety vestibule where you can't proceed. So doing that so that the remaining 15 to 16 elementary schools that do not have the end of front office, it would be completing those. Bringing fencing to a SEPTED standard. Right now, we do have schools that have 4-foot, 5-foot, or 6-foot fencing. We want to make all our fencing standard so that they provide that outer barrier, outer perimeter in a more effective manner. The other piece was video surveillance and cameras along with vape sensors. And that included adding internal cameras at the high schools, increasing the amount of vape sensors at the high schools, and including external and internal cameras at the elementary schools along with vape sensors in the middle school restrooms. The other portion, and I'm trying to remember, digital signage and emergency notification. So that includes upgrades to our intercom system. When an event happens, the faster that we can put the school in lockdown and the faster that we can notify law enforcement to respond. So emergency notification, digital signage would be targeting those areas so that we can get systems in place to save those few seconds that are needed to put the school in lockdown and have law enforcement respond. And then door, thank you, Ms. Myers. And then door access and access control. The key card readers that we have in the school district, they were purchased with a 2012 bond. It's over 10 years old. The card readers, we cannot service them, we cannot repair them, and they are starting to fail. So we're looking for a new system to then replace. And I'll look at Mr. Reese, it's around 635 card readers that we need, but we would like to expand that also. And then also adding door hardware in areas. All our doors are handicap or ADA compliant. We want to cross the threshold to making them ADA accessible. So it's adding, going from that just being compliant to increasing our ADA doors to being accessible where needed.
Okay. Thank you for answering that, and I'm still learning. So with the, I guess, the capital funds, is that not something that can be used? All of those things in our capital funds? Because I know last year I thought I saw we had over 30 million left over. So I don't know, is that something that can be used for those?
Mrs. Rooks, yes. So this year, out of the budget allocation that Ms. Myers' department gave the operations team, we have started to chip away and move the needle in different areas, not just in facility repairs, but in safety in regards to expanding our, for example, our radio system and how we communicate during an event where we activate the emergency operations center. We're also looking at, we've upgraded, and I'll look at Mr. Reese in case I'm missing some. We have used those funds to replace fencing where needed. We are just now got quotes and, sorry, the requisitions and purchase orders to partially upgrade three of the school front offices so that we're using the capital funds that we have in the most critical areas where we've had events happen. And I believe, Mr. Reese, I'm looking over you, but we've done front offices, fencing, radios. And so we are using the capital funds that we have available in weighing where the most critical areas are.
Okay. Yeah, could you, hi, Ryan Reese. Nice to meet you. Can you, yeah, elaborate a little bit more on some of those features that you was talking about?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. Members of the governing board, thank you. Yes, so on top of, obviously, what Mr. Malino spoke about, about trying to go ahead and push the needle on our front offices and create the target hardening aspect that we need. We have come out and slowly, like I said, chipped away at that, as well as we have gone ahead and installed vape sensors at our high school. We are in the process of utilizing the budget again that Mr. Malino has to go ahead and outfit all of our high schools' bathrooms with vape detectors and vape sensors and associated cameras this year, along with a plan for, to go forward with those in next year. So we have done that rollout as well, as well as some schools have, we're starting to get exterior cameras that are in elementarys. So again, utilizing the limited pots of funds, we have slowly started to go ahead and chip away at things that we have identified on our SEPTED reports as vulnerabilities.
Okay. I only wanted to ask that with the safety measures because the principal at Vistancia Elementary, Ms. Bennett, she kind of talked about the front office there and how they purchased the, I think it was around $850 for the clicker to lock the front office, and then the cameras were around $4,000. So looking at that, I just want to make sure that when we're talking about the bond, if you guys are saying it's not been passing for the past couple of years, I don't want to put all of our ducks into that when we're talking about the safety of the students. So I don't know if there's other avenues, other grants that we can look at so that we're not just putting it all there. So that was like my only comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of the governing board, if I may add, some of the capital carryforwards dollars from last year, including building renewal and adjacent ways, would not be eligible for the safety initiatives that Mr. Malino was discussing. Our capital carryboard was actually closer to $23 million, which will then be taking the place of funds that would have been received from bond sales if we had a new bond program. But as part of our work with the Citizens Advisory Committee and budgeting in general, we are developing a capital improvement plan, a multi-year plan, which would identify funding sources, including capital, SFB grants, and other eligible funding sources in addition to bond dollars to address those most important priority needs.
Okay. All right. Thank you for those answers. I appreciate it. All right. If there's no, any other further comments or questions, Ms. Ewing?
Just since we're on this page, you have underneath restrooms estimated costs. Is that for making them more accessible? What are, what are, what is that entailing? Or is that creation of single occupancy bathrooms?
Madam Clerk, Mrs. Ewing, the restroom line item that you're seeing there is partially tile, stall partitions, plumbing. We have a lot of schools where the aging restrooms are prior to 1991, going back into the 70s. So it's just making them more safe and welcoming. The chip tiles addressing those kind of things. And then plumbing as needed, which plumbing, a lot of the plumbing is in one of the other line items in regards to critical and essential repairs. And then, just to clarify, this one line item for restrooms would be only Phase 1, roughly 261 restrooms district-wide out of our 1,100. The full, if we were to address all restrooms in a full rotation, we're talking roughly $80 million.
Okay, thank you. Silly question, but does, do those restrooms include the athletic restrooms? You know, like on the, you know, on the stadium fields, and those restrooms too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. They need it. Okay.
All right. Any, yeah, go ahead.
And just to clarify, these restrooms that we're targeting in Phase 1 would be restrooms that have not been retrofitted in over 40 years or longer. So let's say a school like Sunset doesn't need them. We're going back to essentially 1993 or 40 years.
All right. Thank you. If nobody has any further questions or comments, Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we wrap up, if we could just do a quick review to make sure that the board understands that the work that our Citizens Advisory will be doing over the next month, and then just a, just a reminder of when we'll be bringing the potential recommendation to them for a vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malino, if you don't mind pulling up that last slide. There are two more meetings scheduled. If we go back to, I think it's Slide 3 or 4, we have the meeting scheduled. So we'll go ahead and revisit that just to remind everyone. Our next meeting is April 11th, and then we have a meeting planned for April 25. We anticipate the committee will be completing their work by that second meeting. And of course, if we need to add a meeting, we will. But then we're on track to bring forward a recommendation from the committee to the governing board on or before the second meeting in May. And I will also note that once a recommendation is made, the committee will terminate per policy. It exists up to the point of making the recommendation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So if no further questions or comments, we will move on to the next discussion item, 3.2 Student Services Grants.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rooks. Governing board members, superintendent, guests, have the opportunity today to speak to grants within Student Services, and we'll certainly share with you the two primary grants that we have and how we're working through them and answer any questions that you may have. So, thank you, Mr. Malino. First and foremost, the work we do inside Student Services is connected to our strategic plan. I highlighted the three main areas, of course, student success, safety and well-being. Obviously, we just talked a little bit about the physical safety. This is a little bit more on the emotional side of safety, and certainly stewardship of resources. I didn't highlight community connection, but really, I think the work we do involves all of our stakeholders. Currently, one of the grants that is operated within Student Services is our Mental Health Services Professionals Demonstration Grant. It is a mouthful, and it was written in 2019. It was a part of, we're in a, in Year 4 of that five-year grant cycle. You can see this grant expires in October 24. We are one of 27 recipients across the country, and we're the only district in Arizona to receive this grant. Wanted to highlight the vision for this grant and that it was created and done in partnership with our former superintendent around safe and positive learning environments. This grant was part of an initiative at that time. Our superintendent, Ms. Palace-Thompson, was, put together a conglomerate of individuals, stakeholders, to work inside what she called "not on my watch." This was in direct response to February 14, 2018 Parkland shooting. And I think Ms. Palace-Thompson, along with others, recognized we needed to do more for our student body here in Pure Unified. So that was how this concept of providing opportunities for, in this case, as you see, interns, social work field instructors partnering with our interns and working alongside members of my team to bring in resources for our students. Right during that time, in 2018-19, we had a variety of partnerships, and I listed those on the screen for us. And again, this was simply done with the intent of bringing support to our students. What we know with a demonstration grant is that what you write for and what you put in the application doesn't always come to fruition. There's been a lot of changes, as many of you know, to include COVID. And so I highlighted just the real crux of our current demonstration grant, what we're doing right now. We have four field instructors. These individuals are out in our schools, supporting our schools directly, but also the many social work interns that we have that come through partnerships with NAU, Grand Canyon University, and we also still partner with Arizona State University. You also see here that they support professional development and also just ensuring that we have resources to help our students across our schools. This grant also supports our efforts inside both Tier 1, which is pretty much, if you consider tiers, a global perspective across all our schools, and in Tier 2, behavioral supports and training. At the time, our intent in 2018-19 was to have all of our schools working through what is called Boys Town or Well-Managed Schools. Right now, we have nine schools that remain focused inside that endeavor to support social skills of our students. So I just wanted to give you the basics of the grant and where we currently are. I can answer any questions regarding this grant if you wish, or I can continue on in speaking about the School Safety Program Grants.
I'm okay with you continuing, and we can do questions at the end, if that's okay with the rest of the board members.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rooks. Continuing on, so the other grant or grants that are operated out of Student Services are the ADE or Arizona Department of Education School Safety Grants. And as you can see, we've had a certain amount of grants, 22 of them, to be exact, that we won in the year 2021, and they remain effective through this year. They currently fund 22 social worker positions. These positions are at our schools and are hired by our school principals. We've been able to hire 20 out of 22 over the last three years. As you can see, these social workers support high schools as well as elementary schools. And just most recently, we had the opportunity to resubmit those grants to hopefully retain those individuals who are providing the supports at our campuses. We also most recently had the opportunity to review resources inside the same grant program to look at either school resource officers, juvenile probation officers, social workers, or school counselors. As you may or may not know, materials and grant applications have to be submitted by April 15. And we've worked alongside our school administrators in this endeavor, whether it's what do they see as their primary need or secondary need? Is it a social worker? Is it a counselor? Is it a school resource officer? And I want to be very clear that the community alongside our principals has said, hey, we want services, and that includes social workers and school resource officers as part of that overall safety net for our students and our staff. What we've looked at is how could we allocate school resource officers? We've worked closely with our principals to look at the geography of location as well as to look at our data sets. well as to look at our data sets, where are crimes being committed, where are offenses that need to be considered if we were to partner schools? Certainly, we want to highlight the efforts on behalf of our City of Glendale and Peoria Police Departments, and just want everybody to know that they are and do remain as partners with us in this endeavor. But there's also a very important fact to consider here, is that right now, our partnerships aren't able to meet the demands of the School Safety Program Grants. Information, like I said earlier, has to be in by April 15th. In order for us to submit for school resource officers, the police departments have to be able to, again, meet the demands of the grants, such as, we not only have the bodies to give you at that time, but also we have the resources to support, and right at this time, we aren't able to do that. But I also just want to highlight, as we've gone through this experience, you have numerous departments that are working through this to try to ensure that we have the most amount of resources and services in our schools.
Dr. Davidson, if we could, maybe Mr. Reese could come to address that first bullet, and just talk a little bit about what we are currently doing with our school resource officers, or our school liaison officers, rather.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Reynolds, Madam Clerk, members of the board. So yes, what we are doing with our partnerships with Peoria PD and Glendale PD is we are looking to, again, push the needle and still be able to put individuals in the schools to provide those sources. So what we are looking at currently right now is, based upon the end strength that PD might be able to actually support us right now, or possibly in the near future, is to provide what we call school liaison officers to different clusters, so like in our northern schools in Peoria, have two, three officers up there with a northern, south, or maybe even the central cluster, to be able to provide those school resource officer light duties, so that they're known by the staff, they're known by the students, but still provide that law enforcement ability as needed at schools, but gives them the flexibility to go to multiple schools. And when we look at the bandwidth and the ability to do that, that is the model that we're currently searching on both Glendale and Peoria, is to provide a couple of extra school liaison officers, and then work our way up to maybe something a little bit longer with additional resources.
So, Mrs. Rooks and board members, I'll stand for any additional questions regarding the grants that are serviced in my department.
Thank you. Ms. Ewing, do you want to go first? Okay.
Thank you. So I have a question, a couple of questions. The school liaison officer that you're speaking about, does that individual qualify for this safety grant, or is it only SRO? So the funds to pay that individual?
Yes, ma'am. For the, this grant is for school resource officers only, and again, that would be a school resource officer that would be at one or possibly two schools with 80%. So we look at that school resource officer at an elementary school being dedicated to solely there, as opposed to a school liaison officer, that gives us the, and PD a little bit more flexibility, per the grant rules, that they don't necessarily have to spend 80% of their time at that one campus due to needs in the surrounding, you know, schools and clusters. So there is another grant that we possibly have an option to. It's called a School Safety Officer Grant. I have not had a chance to talk with my PD counterparts and see if that is maybe the better avenue that we can possibly look at for funding for the school liaison officer piece.
Okay, and then do we know with the school liaison, is it, is there still the same issue of, I guess it's human capital, of having availability from the police department, or is that a different?
So I've been working very diligently with Peoria and Glendale Police Department. Again, they are in the middle of a budget cycle, so they're trying to make sure that anything that they can commit to, their budget cycle obviously starts in July 1st, so when we look at the April 15th deadline, they have to look and make sure that, you know, everything's funded and budgeted, but I can tell you, we've been working with Peoria PD to be able to get two officers possibly here in the very near future, and possibly one more for Glendale. So again, we have to look at their budget line items and see, do they have the ability to support that, and then we can talk about dollars and cents, ma'am.
Okay. And then I think, Dr. Reynolds, I think when we spoke before, that the previous grant didn't allow for SROs to be shared across campuses? Is that, and I don't know if this new one is different, or?
No, and then, when I was referring to that, I was referring to back when I was intimately involved in, yeah, so that was a while ago.
Okay.
So I can't, I don't know if anyone else?
So I don't know if the, so I'll ask, okay, so never mind on that piece. So on the, on this, let's say, because we have so many elementary schools that are very close to one another, so with the grant, if a SRO was approved for one school, does it allow for sharing of that?
So they're allowed to either be at one or two schools in the grant application.
Okay.
But I think what you heard from Dr. Davidson is, at this time, neither Glendale or Peoria is, has the capacity to be able to support that on a wide scale, which is why we continue to explore the SLO option.
Yeah.
That gives us some more flexibility.
And so, and I don't know if you have this data just yet, but on the SLO option, because I think with the SROs, we were thinking like we needed, like if we had to meet every school, that would be like 22, I think I remember hearing that number, I might be wrong on that. But if we did that SLO option, do we know what that number would be reduced down to, to just like, is it even a manageable number with regards to like our police departments?
So our first step, we have, I believe, two SLOs in the City of Glendale, and we're looking at three SLOs for the City of Peoria.
Okay.
Broken up into the sectors that Mr. Reese referred to.
Okay, great. I think, I think that's my allotment of questions, so thank you.
All right, Mrs. Hill, any questions or comments?
I guess I just had a couple. I was wondering with the Mental Health Services Professionals Demonstration Grant, wow, that's a lot. I had to write it out. One of our partners was Bloom 365, so are we still partnering with Bloom City 365 on that, or where are we at with that partnership?
Ms. Hill, we don't currently have an effective MOU with Bloom 365, so we are not.
Okay, so I was just wondering, because that was listed, so I wasn't sure. So that, is that still current? Okay, and I was also wondering with relationship to the school liaison officer, I believe you mentioned that that would be an opportunity that maybe the time could be divided between maybe two schools? Would it be like a half, a half one at one school, half day at one school, half day at another? I was just trying to figure out how that would work? Do you just split it up evenly, half and half, or?
So before Mr. Reese jumps in, because I'm going to ask him to expand on this a little bit, with the SLO option, it is, not option, it's what we're currently working with as our plan, there are more than two, one or two schools that that SLO supports. So think about, if we break Peoria up into the three areas that Mr. Reese talked about, so that SLO would be responsible for all the schools in those three, or I'm sorry, in one of those three areas. So I'll let Mr. Reese talk a little bit more about it.
Yeah, maybe you could expand on that. I, you know, I don't know how that works then, so if there's an issue, does he go to the school that has the issue, or does he just do rounds and rotate? How would that work exactly?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Hill. Yes, so to explain that a little bit more, when we look at the data, again, we all make data-driven decisions, when we look at the calls for service for our schools, for our elementary schools, while not as much as a high school, there is still a need there, but there are, you know, four, five, maybe six a year that require an actual law enforcement intervention or a need there. So when we look at an SLO, we look at somebody who would go ahead and be that person that would go and maybe hit every single school every day, and still put touches on. But when we have that one individual, we need to call for law enforcement. We think about, would we pull a high school school resource officer off the campus? So now we have a high school that doesn't have a school resource officer on, to go to, you know, we'll say Zuni Hills, to go and maybe take a statement or do something of that nature. So, and that obviously is not the best case, to remove that school resource officer from a high school to go do that. So then the lift then comes to, you know, the police department to have a patrol officer come and take that report. Whereas we want to make sure that everybody is, you know, welcome, and that they understand having that school liaison officer would be a person that would develop those relationships by those schools, come and do education, and so when they come and actually possibly have to do a law enforcement type event there, they're not just a patrol officer, they're someone that actually has an inherent need, they understand the school and the community, and that is what a SLO and SROs bring to our district, and that is what we're trying to maximize. How it would actually share would be, they would still put all the touches around there, but they would be the point person that would go and be that person, you know, be that law enforcement agency there, if that makes a little sense.
No, that does make sense, and I'm just vocalizing this because there's obviously been recent shootings and strange things going on in our nation, and I just think it probably might not be a bad idea to not just have the exact same schedule. If I were a shooter, and I would figure out the schedule of that officer, and make sure I go to that school when that officer's not there. So if you rotate it and change it, so it's, they won't be able to tell, they won't know, because it won't be a set schedule, I think that would be probably a smart idea. I don't know if you've already thought of that, but that might be something to consider, so that it's a very fluid, it's constantly changing, so that someone can't just figure that out.
Yes, ma'am. I will tell you that both on Glendale and Peoria, yes, they would be very dynamic.
Yeah.
And it is, yes, not standard, just the same thing every day.
We're very confident in their expertise and their ability to.
Oh, I know, it's, sometimes, you know, you just don't think of these strange things, you know, so I just want to make sure that that was something that would be considered.
Yes, ma'am, it will be considered.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dr. Bill Sworson, any questions or comments?
Yeah, for our social workers that we get through the grant, who evaluates them?
Ms. Rooks and Dr. Sworson, currently, our school principals are serving as the primary evaluators. I would tell you, though, they do seek input from Ms. Leonard as well as Dr. Walters.
So how do we measure the impact or the effectiveness? Like what metrics do we look at? Do we have any quantitative data that shows whether it be process goals of interactions or exit outcome goals of acts of violence? How are we measuring their effectiveness?
Certainly, certainly, and it's a wonderful question, and it's one that we can continue to grow in. I see Ms. Leonard over there, and I might ask her at some point to speak on the data that is collected, Mr. Sworson, on behalf of those grants, because it is, it is a large data set, and it highlights the needs from the campuses, quanti, you know, quantifies what they're servicing the students for, the amount that they're servicing them, in terms of number of times. And so there is a data set that says, this is what they do, whether or not, I don't know, I think it's a little bit hard to measure the complete process and how it's positively reinforcing those behaviors we want to see versus what we might be seeing, right? I also know that most recently, our social worker group was allowed for the Department of Education to be under that, I can't think of it all of a sudden, Ms. Myers, performance pay. It's the model for performance pay, where they now have to establish a goals through classroom site fund, thank you, Dr. Sworson, where, to where now our principals can actually say, "School social worker, you have said you're going to work towards this goal using this data set, and now will be used at the end of the year to really gauge whether or not they are successful or not."
So that's part of the 301?
Yes, sir.
And are they, what evaluation tool do we use? Are we using our teacher evaluation tool?
Currently, we are, yes, sir.
It's tough to evaluate a social worker on Charlotte Danielson, right? Yeah.
Are, can I just jump in and?
Yeah, please.
Add to that. So, you know, one of the things to remember as we think about the timeline and when we received this demonstration grant, and then almost immediately went into the pandemic, right? And so much of what we're currently doing is establishing that baseline data, right? That then we can, we can create those metrics to be able to determine our success.
Yeah, one metric, I guess, that I think of in regard to safety and social workers is, I know just anecdotally, as a school leader, many times, these individuals will let us know when they feel a student shows signs of potential violence, and that has been very effective for me as a school leader to intercept or provide some support, or do a threat assessment, or go through our safety steps before there's been acts of violence. So I would just advocate that, I don't know how you would code that, I don't know how you'd put that in our student information system, but something that shows the proactive nature of some of those things in regard to safety is something that I know that I'm very interested in. So we have, transitioning to field instructors, we have four of those for the district? Was that accurate?
Currently, Dr. Sworson, you are correct. We have four field instructors who are out supervising those interns that come through the universities for us.
And is that funded through our grant, or is that from our own MNO?
That is funded through the demonstration grant.
Okay, thank you. Are those field instructors involved in our threat assessment process?
Very much so, sir.
Okay. Are the, do the SLOs also provide instruction, or no? Would they be part of kind of the SRO grant of providing classroom instruction, or not necessarily?
Yes, Dr. Sworson, yes, that would be one of the requirements. We already have that in our IGA's with our SROs, as well as our SRO and SLO component in Glendale, where they would be the individuals that would come in and do some of the law enforcement education, and we'll talk to them about the dangers of vaping, drugs, some of that nature, so we would still ask them to do certain hours and certain touches on that, on those specific topics.
But it is not the same requirements as through the SRO?
Correct, it is not the same, a certain number of hours and the same process, but we would still ask them, because they continue to do that, provide those services to our students.
Yeah, and just once, once again, in my experience with officers who are on campuses, when they get a chance to get into classrooms and interact with adolescents and build those positive relationships, and that is, right, I know we may not have the capacity for SROs everywhere, but the idea of an SLO being spread across multiple schools and the capacity to build positive relationships with kids, so once again, we get information on the front end of, hey, I'm concerned about this kid, I'm concerned about my friend, hey, he's acting differently, or she, or whoever, I find that to be challenging. So having them in classrooms, not necessarily meeting a requirement, but having that be intentional, is a nice source of safety and relationship building in our schools. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So I do have a couple of questions. So the Mental Health Demonstra, Professional Demonstration Grant, I was looking into it online on the federal website, and it talks about their, you know, provides and supports to have trained, school-based, mental health service providers in the schools. My only concern is a couple of things. I've heard from some parents that some of the surrounding concerns would be, there was something listed through the grants, the School Safety Grant and this grant, of confidentiality and limits the confidentiality, and that if, let's say there is a group-based setting at one of our elementary schools with a social worker, with a couple of students, anything that is said in that group cannot be shared with anybody outside that group. I also know that the social worker interns we were partnering with ASU and GCU, they're also with the field instructors, are overseeing the mental health therapy sessions with the students that are identified. The colleges that we're partnering with, I looked up the courses, because when we're pulling in somebody to work with the kids on mental health treatment, mental health therapy, we really need to know what is the criteria, what are we working with? I was a little concerned because some of the college courses and the mission statements were mostly leaning towards social justice activism. So that to me, if, reading through, I mean, I printed out all of the Arizona School Safety Grants for each school, and reading through each school's criteria of what's been going on at every school for these kids that are having bipolar disorders, anxiety, depression, suicide thoughts, hurting others, when you're talking about that severe circumstances, as a mom, I'm like, that child needs to be seen with a specialist, whether it's a psychiatrist, if it's drug addiction, or a psychologist for some of these concerns brought up, and doing it in a safe environment, which is, to me, in a medical facility. When you're providing these, you know, trainings or interventions on the campuses, how are we to know that that setting is safe for all the other students? Because you're, when you're talking about school-based mental health service providers, you look at the surrounding states right now, in Colorado, they have, their schools have medical health clinics on the campuses. In Colorado, they have, their schools have medical health clinics on the campuses. So is that direction that we're going to be going? Because I know you said there's families in here that don't have insurance or can't afford services outside of, you know, medical facilities. So how did we determine that that became our role as a school district to provide medical, mental health services or therapy, things like that? I know I just threw a lot out there, but I really dug into it, because it makes me a little concerned.
Sure. I appreciate you doing that and being super informed. Very, there was a lot of information you covered there, Ms. Rooks. Certainly, I want to just highlight, and I will ask Ms. Leonard to give us some insight into the world of, of school-based social workers and, and the work that they do. They play a very integral role in providing supports to students with mental health needs. But you, you went into a version of what we would call a tier-three support, which is those community partners that we have who are trained to do that work that is often done in a different facility. Sometimes they even have different certifications, licensers, license, excuse me, to provide those supports. So I agree with you. We want to ensure that we are providing the right services. But here's what I also want to state, the services our school-based social workers do provide are done in partnership with our families. They, they are working directly alongside our, our parents to ensure that, again, that whole support network is moving in the same direction and not doing it separate nor trying to hide something from our families. But Ms. Leonard, would you mind be able to speak a little bit to the, the work of the school social worker and, and how we navigate some of those concerns that Ms. Rooks had?
My pleasure. Thank you, Ms. Rooks, members of the board. I'm really happy to be here tonight to speak about the work that our social workers do. As Dr. Davidson alluded to, first of all, all of our students that receive services with our social workers have, our social workers have received signed consent forms from all parents in order to move forward. We do not do work with students unless it's a crisis situation where all of a sudden a student is in crisis and we need to get somebody there right away. We're not going to necessarily call the parent and say, hey, can I work with your kid in crisis at the moment? We will go address that crisis. But ongoing support is done in conjunction with our families. So Dr. Davidson is correct in that. Secondly, our, our social workers and our social worker interns do not provide ongoing therapy. They provide social skills, they provide support at the time, perhaps they need some emotional regulation, maybe a student is melting down in a classroom, and we need to get that student regulated to go back to the classroom as soon as possible. But they do not provide ongoing therapy for students. That is not our role as social, school social workers. That's when we would provide a referral to an outside resource to bring that support to the family and work in conjunction with the family to provide those supports. However, when you are reading in, in some of the grants that you have been reading, the fact of the matter is, there are a lot of outside resources that don't have capacity right now. So in the meantime, maybe we're doing a little bit more check-in than we would normally do with the student, or do a little bit more support, but it is not ongoing therapy. I hope that's understood. Any other clarifications you'd like?
Yes, so I did see through the grant, the school safety grant, the confidentiality and limits to confidentiality. And I did reach out to a friend who is a social worker in a different district in Arizona, and I tried to ask kind of what that background information is on the confidentiality and limits to confidentiality. And basically, it was explained that if it's anything that's not, a student wants to hurt themselves, or somebody else, or there is child abuse, or I think pregnancy and drug abuse, if it's not in that scope, then it's not shared with the parents. So can you, because I kept seeing that through the school safety grant, that we had to develop a guidance counseling plan and that we had to work in the confidentiality and limits to confidentiality with working with a student.
So like most mental health professionals or helping professionals, we do try to create an atmosphere of safety, a place where students feel like they can speak about what's going on in their lives in a way that is safe and they have access to somebody who's going to not keep secrets, but keep confidentiality's. What I mean by that is, anytime a student is in harm's way, whether it's harm to self, harm to others, someone's harming them, there is possible that there's a medical concern that they're, like pregnancy, which I would be considered a medical concern. If there is excessive drug use, and that, again, is a medical concern, we would absolutely let the parent know immediately. The other thing that social workers are very good at is encouraging students to speak about other things that might be bothering them. Let's say they're mad at their little brother, and they don't want to tell their mom because their mom will get mad at them. So how do we work through that situation? How can they help let their mom know that they're mad at their little brother in a way that they're not going to feel like they're going to get in trouble? So we talk those things through with them. I'm not exactly sure if you're, you have specific situations. I can't speak to very specific situations, but anytime a child is remotely in any kind of danger or danger is happening to them, a parent will be told right away. Do we call every time a kid comes to see us to talk about, they don't understand why they don't have friends, and we kind of work on what friendship looks like? We don't necessarily call mom and say, hey, we talked about what it means to be a friend today. But we do keep parents informed. We give them updates on a regular basis as to how it's going with their student. And again, the parent is involved in that process.
Okay. I do have one question, because we had a parent reach out. There was an email sent to Zuni Hills Elementary Parents, and they did speak about, you know, parent consent form. So I appreciate that being in there. But what was stated in the email was a five-week course. It was every Monday, and it was supposed to be, they had in there just someone's name listed, Mrs. so-and-so will come in and work with the kids. This is each week, the topic that they will be discussing. Do you want to participate or not have your child participate? So I had looked up the person's name in that email to see, like, is this a teacher? Is this a teacher assistant? And it was a social worker. So when I see that, I don't know if all parents realize when they're signing that permission form, they are then having their kids go into that class to work with a social worker. And I just bring up that because of the question, you know, the things you just talked about, is that's going to be said during those lessons? What are going to be those conversations back and forth with all the students in the classroom? And then the parents don't really realize, oh, I just signed a permission form for a social worker, when I thought it was a teacher that was coming in and kind of giving those lessons. Just, it, it just seems like with this mental health demonstration grant that you guys have been applying for the past couple of years, there's been no communication that I'm aware of to parents, like, hey, this is what we've been doing, we applied for this grant, we're going to bring in mental health, mental health service providers into the schools to be working with the kids. Yes, you can sign a permission slip, but again, you're putting that in, you're mixing the medical side in with the school setting. And that's where I think that, you know, it, it says Peoria Unified School District. And so I get kind of concerned when we're, you know, families can't find mental health outside of school. Are we then going to start providing other medical services that families can't find outside of the school district? I mean, where does the kind of go towards? Sorry.
Again, we are not providing ongoing mental health therapy.
I was just going to say, no, we do not have any, any plans to expand into some of the areas that you were talking about.
Okay. The, I'm looking here for Marshall Ranch. They, they have goals, objectives, and activities. For the social worker, the goal is to decrease suspensions and increase coping strategies for students. I know that there was mentioned restorative practices through there. Objective, student support teams will refer identified students to social workers for intervention to decrease suspensions due to defiance and disrespect by 25% over the previous year, as demonstrated by the school suspension report by the end of fiscal year 2019, 2020. You have activities on here, one-on-one clinical support to increase coping strategies. You have support groups to increase coping strategies. So I guess when I'm seeing that, is that kind of the goals that we're looking at? Are we measuring that each time we apply for this grant? Have we met the objectives when the goals that we've applied for each school? Because that, that's a lot of information in there, and I just, I see one-on-one clinical support to increase coping strategies. And with reading through especially the high school levels, there was a lot of, you know, kids on drugs, which, of course, we don't want kids on drugs, but there was a lot of, there was ADHD, and how do we provide coping strategies to kids with ADHD? To me, that is, you're, you're getting into that medical terminology, so.
We're helping provide behavioral supports, helping them make, figure out how they can get through the day. What are some things they can do behaviorally? Some things, ways they can think differently to get them through the day.
Okay, and does that, do you guys work with the behavior interventionists that we have at the schools too with that support?
Typically, those are also typically social workers. Behavioral interventionists mainly work with our special education population. That's why we encourage our schools to get social workers, because our behavior interventionists are really tied up with our special education population.
Ms. Rooks, if I might add, please, each school is asked to have a, what we call it, and you might remember this from a previous conversation called the student support team, which is, if you happen to have a social worker, that's great, but if not, it's made up of a variety of people, to include our administrative team, maybe the, the nurse, if you're at a high school, the SRO. But oftentimes, when a student is in need, that group comes together and, you know, really wraps their arms in parentheses, right? Not physical, but that, that arm around the student to ensure that they're given the supports they need. And it could come from a variety of resources.
Okay, and with regards to outside resources, you know, I, I believe that we talked about if kids have difficult home life, or they don't have food, those kind of services, we do have organizations we partner with. And I guess, I'm wondering, previously, the past years that we've not had social workers, we've had, the teachers are trained in recognizing signs in the classrooms, they're, they have to be mandated reporters. We have, I mean, we have all these other adults on campuses to provide those resources that we partner with. So, and I, I know that the grant is covering the social workers, but maybe if Ms. Myers could elaborate on the, when we approved the salary schedule for the social workers and the mental health counselors, underneath, there was a bunch of fine print, we talked about, it's set on their performance pay, classroom site dollars. So is the, is the grant fully covering it, or is it, is some of it coming out of other areas?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, members of the board. I believe you're referring to when Mrs. Vastly brought forward the updated social worker salary schedule, which was simply pulling out the existing salary schedule from the certified schedule that also includes teachers. You are correct that the legislature did pass legislation to allow function 2100 employees to be eligible for classroom site fund. And last spring, as our budget team brought recommendations to the governing board, the expanded eligibility for employees who are in that function was included in our compensation recommendation, and the governing board did, did approve rather, including those newly eligible staff, which include the social worker, social workers, I should say, that are funded through the state of Arizona ADE grant. So that's different than the field instructor, instructors through the federal grant. So there, there's a distinction there. And again, it was eligible through classroom site fund for a number of areas, including nurses and psychologists, as well as other employees who are coded to that function. So yes, there is a portion from classroom site fund.
Okay. Dr. Davidson, the Student Support Service Department has these two grants. I'm only asking because, is there any other grants that the Student Support Department has been utilizing besides these two in our district?
Ms. Rooks, in regards to social workers or?
Um, I guess, so there's this Title IV grant that we've been applying for, and in there it has activities to support safe and healthy students. I pulled it through the grant management system, and it has in there the same type of language initiative of the mental health grant and the school safety grant, with the social emotional learning, with the mental health, you know, helping the students with the mental health needs. And, and so I actually did call the Arizona Department of Ed to see, like, what is that? Because we've been applying for it for those specific things. And it's, it's a grant that is supposed to help support safe and healthy students. It also has the opportunity to apply for security measures at your schools, meaning cameras, locked doors, locked windows. I mean, it, it has that opportunity for those security measures on your buildings. So I guess, I just wonder how many grants we're tapping into, and if we're really looking at other options under those grants to cover other areas that are needed as well? Because I think the safety and security of the buildings themselves needs to be number one priority, and if it's available in the Title IV grant for support safe and healthy students, I just, it seems like we're just really putting all, everything into one category.
No, that's, that's another great question, Ms. Rooks. And here's what I know to be true, is we utilize a variety of resources, you're right, to meet the safety needs of our campuses. Title IV is a grant that runs through our Federal Projects Department, and a component of that Title IV grant is exactly, as you said, regarding safe and welcoming schools. And I know that Ms. Little, if she were here, would be able to describe all the different departments and ways in which she works with us to try to talk about what do our schools need to ensure safety. I do not know the restrictions around some of those, the physical plant, as you speak about, maybe Dr. Hernandez could, and if not, we could get you more information. But I know that that is a mandatory component inside Title IV is on behalf of safety.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Hernandez.
There we go, how about that? Good? Okay, so the Title IV allocation does come through federal programs. And to share a little bit about the projects that come through there, annually, we ask for proposals from our schools and district offices on what are the projects. Title IV is all about well-rounded students. So some of the examples of the projects that we're considering for the allocation include professional development. Our arts department benefits significantly from our Title IV allocation. They have integration where they work with different consultants that we bring in for, to work with our teachers, specific to arts, and to work with our students. Our visual and performing areas have consultants that come through that are funded through that piece. There is also some of our professional memberships on the arts side that we utilize for the well-rounded piece. Within the, our technology division, we have such things like our professional development for our canvas implication, which we are really excited to be having. Also, as another example, within our area, the technology components that we have that support student learning can come through there as well. There is a limitation, I believe it's, Lori's going to be upset if I get this wrong, I believe it's 15% that can cover technology, and that's it from the well-rounded. Did I get it right?
Yeah.
But those are some of the areas. And so what we do is we have, we put out sort of an all-call for proposals to say, this is the purpose of Title IV as a federal allocation, and if you have a need in your respective area, your school, that fits into well-rounded, we ask them to put together a proposal that details the purpose, the cost, the consideration. My department group of directors meets, and we consider all of those proposals up against the district strategic plan, vision, mission, and our beliefs as a district, and determine which of those has the best, most need, best fit to be funded for the. to be funded for the year going forward.
Okay, and is there the, the section for support safe and healthy students? Is that, because the language, it has the multi-tiered level of support. It has the social emotional learning initiative. So there just seems to be, if we have other areas that it can cover, are we really looking and diving into all of our resources? It's kind of just where, I mean, because it just seems like we're just all over different grants. And again, like, we need to see the data that you guys are putting in. We have objectives, we have goals for each school. Where are the outcomes of those for the past? Because this is back to 2018, 2019. That's, we're now, you know, 2023. So I guess if we're investing in all of this, we need to see how it's returning. And then obviously, other areas needing to be looked at, especially if, you know, we're not going to get certain things. Security also falls under supporting the safety and of our students.
I think the comments are important into our planning process. I think one of the things that hopefully that you're hearing is that we're tapping into as many resources as we possibly can to be able to bring supports to our students in a variety of ways. And so as we analyze and we look at Title IV, when we look at any of the other grant opportunities, any other partnerships that we have, the important thing is that we coordinate, right, our resources. We coordinate our efforts so that we're not duplicating. And I think our team does a really, really good job of making sure that, you know, that, that we're not, like I said, duplicating our efforts in those different areas. And so it requires the whole team coming together along with principals, parents, right? Students, getting student feedback, all of those types of things in order to make sure that we're using our resources in the way that specifically our, our schools are asking for. Just like Dr. Sorenson mentioned, that, that evaluation component, how we, how we put our data together to ensure that, that the programs that we have in place, and that's an important part of our strategic plan, as we evaluate those programs, that they are effective. And those programs that are less effective, then we potentially move away from and then look for more effective programming.
Okay, and then Ms. Leonard, if I could ask another question. Sorry, I made you sit back down, sorry. With, because I know you oversee the social worker internship program that we're utilizing from ASU and GCU. Can you talk about what, what that has been looked like for the everyday intern coming in? What, what kind of is the process the past couple of years through that?
Thank you for your question, Ms. Rooks. So Arizona State University and Grand Canyon University have, first of all, their process on interns can look through a myriad of different placements to see where they would be interested in applying for an internship. Then if they reach out to us through, they have a system through ASU called Sonya. I can't remember what it's called through GCU, I apologize. And then they request to, for an interview with our field instructor team and ourselves. We have an application process, we do an interview process. We take a look at the skills of the interns and we try to meet them up, match them up with schools that would best, that could best serve. For example, if they're somebody who doesn't have a lot of background, they need a lot of guidance, we might put them at a school that has maybe a social worker already on the campus so that they could get a little bit more guidance along with the field instructor so that they're having some, they're having more eyes on them so that they can make, learn the process a little bit better. So we'd have a pretty good process, we've done a really good job. This year's been tough. ASU West only has five, no, actually four people in their graduate program right now that is finishing up this year. So we haven't had as many interns this year as we would have liked. The pandemic has taken its toll on higher education as well as the anxiety level of these students as well. So we had three interns, three or four, I think, quit in the middle of the year due to their own issues. So it's been kind of a rocky year this year, but overall, our success has been very effective. We've had really great feedback from the interns themselves and the schools on the, the jobs that the interns have been doing. So we're, we're really proud of what we've been doing. The federal programs people have told us that throughout the pandemic, we were able to provide a lot more services than most of the other 27 or 26 applicants because we worked through the pandemic, we worked online. We worked, our interns were meeting with kids online with parent permission as well. So we were providing parenting groups online. We were doing whatever we could during the pandemic when we were shut down. That's right when our program started. So we had to pivot and I think we did a really good job, so.
All right, thank you for explaining it, I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Any other questions regarding our work?
Yeah, Ms. Ewing?
Kind of just an overview. So first of all, I, I do want to say that when I've been out visiting the campuses and have been speaking to either the principals or the social workers themselves, I like that the goals for the social workers are based on the campus locations and their needs. I have gotten a lot of positive feedback about how the counselors, the social workers have allowed there to be less time out of the classroom for the students, for those suffering who have a lot of anxiety. They would typically have to leave to go to an appointment and then having a, someone onsite that they can go to and maybe be out of the classroom 15 minutes for that emotional regulation so they can get back into the classroom. It's less time that they're being taken away from instruction. It is, and it's just less time that they're missing. And so they, those, because we don't have a lot of the data right now, we only really have the, the response from the administrators about how it has allowed the students to be more in the classroom. I spoke to a social worker at another site who she was working with the child and the parent about how can we get that, that student anxiety didn't want to be, was having a lot of anxiety coming to school and they were working with them and trying to, how can we get you to school more often? And working through all of those things. And I don't think that that would be a time that a teacher would be able to have to, to be having those conversations. I will say also that I know that when we, when I was talking to some other administrators and we were talking about behavior, is that when you have the social workers there, if there's a kid that is consistently, whether it's the emotional regulation, aggressiveness, not really aggressiveness, but maybe just having a difficult time in that classroom, if they can pull them out and allow the entire class to get on with what they need to be learning that day, instead of the teacher having to take time out for that one student, which can, which means that the teaching time is reduced. It, it's, it's helpful for the, it's, it's much better for the rest of the students in the classroom that student is taken out, working, worked with a social worker so that that teacher can go on and teach the rest of the class and then that student can come back in. So I know that, and for each campus and for each demographic, it's going to be a little bit different, the goals that the social workers have at each site. But it seems like each site that I've spoken to who has a social worker, they've been able to identify really clear things that have brought the student back into the classroom more often. It's allowed the teachers to get on with their instruction and so forth. So I, I appreciate the social workers in there and appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Ewing, thank you for your comments. Yeah, we're, you know, we're, as we work with our principals and the principals work with their communities, their site councils, their leadership teams and identifying their needs, we hear that, that need in, in many, many situations. And so, yes, they do provide a tremendous resource and allow teachers to, to be focused on, on their instruction. So thank you for that. I do want, one of the fun jobs that I have in helping facilitate the study session is just to remind us that we're at 5:45. Not that we have to finish exactly at six, but just want to keep us on our, the, the time of our, our staff and of course, the board and our audience, so.
All right. Well, if no further comments or questions, we can move on to the next line item then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to 3.3, Budget Team Update.
Yes, well, good, thank you. Good evening again, Madam Clerk, members of the governing board, Dr. Reynolds and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the work that administration has been doing in conjunction with our budget team related to the fiscal year 2024 budget development process. And on the next slide, you'll see just a brief summary of what we'll, we'll discuss tonight, including background and goals that were set by the governing board a number of years ago in the area of compensation and priorities. Work that's been done with our budget team, including participation and the process that we have in place for this year, progress that we've made to date, as well as funding that we are identifying in our pro formas, as well as priorities for expenditure considerations. And of course, our timeline through the rest of this process that will include governing board action along the way. And of course, questions can be asked during the presentation or at the end as well. Both Mrs. Vasily and I facilitate our budget team and we're both happy to answer your questions at any point. Moving on to the next slide. The board will recall that back in February of 2020, the governing board at the time approved a goal regarding our budget and included in that goal was a requirement to develop a multi-year plan to address compensation outcomes for all employee groups, to identify an overarching plan with a phased-in approach based on available funding over the years. And so we have used that as a starting point a number of years ago. And on the next slide, you'll see that we immediately focused on, on teacher-certified staff and classified staff as part of that goal as we implemented our multi-year plan. And that plan continues this year and will continue into the future. And on the next slide, you'll see that we have a number of stakeholders that are part of the process. We do not have an MOU in place for salary negotiations here in Peoria Unified. Rather, we use a budget team, stakeholders, over 30 members from our entire district, certified, classified, and administrative representatives, as well as members of our professional associations. And they work hand in hand with the administration along the way, not only continuing to focus on the priorities that have been identified over the years, but also to identify new priorities when appropriate. And so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the next slide. And so when I talk about priorities, I'd like to highlight some of the outcomes with the team in recent years. I know you've seen this slide before, but I do think it's important just to take a couple of minutes to review some of the work that's been done because it has been significant, in, in part due to new funding that became available after Prop 1, 2, 3 was passed and inflation funding was restored. And you'll note on this slide, I won't go through every bullet point, but one of the main takeaways was that in 2021, we were able to increase our beginning teacher salary for the first time in a number of years to just over $40,000. And of course, we implemented the 20 by 2020, the Governor Ducey's initiative for certified teachers. And we started to really prioritize our classified staff because there was a significant compression that was created with, with the minimum wage increases that were part of Prop 206. And so we move on to the next slide. Again, highlights, especially going into not only fiscal year 2022, but 2023, bus driver compensation really became a priority and a conversation point in the fall of 2021, as well as those ongoing minimum wage increases. And what we were able to do with some of our new funding from the COVID relief grants, ESAR dollars, we were able to do some targeted retention stipends. Again, earlier I mentioned that expansion of classroom site fund, function 2100. All eligible staff were included in that expansion. And of course, last year, we initially had a 3% raise that then if we go to the next slide, was increased when additional funding came into effect in the summer of, of 2022. And I highlight that because as we talk about compensation development, we're seeing some of our sister districts who are currently now utilizing some of those new dollars that came available last year. And I want to make a distinction that Peoria Unified immediately addressed that additional funding last summer to ensure we could support our, our employees in the best way. And I have a slide further in the presentation that, that talks about new funding and I'll, I'll highlight some of those dollar amounts as well. And one of the biggest things we were able to do was to increase our teacher salary schedule again to $48,000, as well as increase classified staff compensation between $2 and $2.08 as well as a 65 cent mid-year increase. So I highlight that work just to remind everyone. And on the next slide, you will see here are all of those years of progress at a glance. You'll note that we've tried to address compression in a strategic way with raises based on longevity. That has been something that's been discussed again with our budget team this year as we continue our work because the, the conversation is, is compression. And some of the progress we made over the last couple of years, increasing salary schedules and, and related activities, actually created what I'll call some banded compression that we'll, we'll talk about later in the presentation. Moving on to the next slide, here's also the summary of classroom site fund increases over the last several years. Classroom site fund is a priority with our budget team this year. It's a mechanism for us to not only provide increases to eligible staffs, compensation on top of the increase to the base that may come from MNO or the grant that funds that employee, but it can also be used to strategically address banded compression. And so that's been a topic of conversation over the last few meetings. Moving on to the next slide, please. Every year, and I updated the slide, we don't have the scales this time with the graphic, but we do have the same factors and considerations, both internal and external. And you'll actually see with our budget development that I'm going to share that student enrollment is a factor. ASRS is something we're considering as well as ongoing minimum wage increases and, and related considerations. So all of these factors, both internal and external, come into play when we create pro formas for our budget development. And moving on to the next slide, what we have done this year is we are working with known information. I have a packet of bills that are still alive, but until something is passed, it's not law. And even last year, the legislative session went until the end of June. And some of that new funding that came through wasn't really a factor in January or February when we started running projections. And so the work we do with our budget team for our initial pro forma development is to plan on 2% inflation funding. And recommended budgets from the governor or the legislature as they are proposed and, and move forward or don't, they all have to be reconciled at the end to have a final state of Arizona budget. And we're not quite there yet. So we're working with 2%. We do have full district additional assistance or capital funding restoration. I will note that capital district additional assistance is not increased based on inflation. 2% cap, by the way, and we know nationally, it's right now hovering around 6%. It was 8% or so last year. So it's lower than the actual inflation rate, it has a cap. And then of course, our override, so important, renewed by our community in November of 2020, provides approximately $29 million of funding each year for our budget. Next slide, please. Some of those factors, the scale, the internal and the external considerations, we know there's going to be an increase for Arizona State Retirement System contribution rates. Very small increase, but it's still something we have to plan for as well as our alternative contribution rate. We're initially estimating that that's going to be roughly a $40,000 impact. Our Valley Schools, our insurance group, as well as our employee benefits, workers' compensation each year, that those amounts are renewed at the next board meeting. We'll be having a presentation on our employee benefit renewal and, and rates and increases related to that renewal process. Custodial is going to go up roughly $350,000. Water costs, we know are increasing around $100,000. And of course, we know the minimum wage increase will be upon us again next January because it's not capped. Went from 805, then up to 12, 1280, 1385. Went from 8:05, then up to 12, 1280, 1385, is based on August, over August inflation. We were able to make significant progress with our classified hourly staff with, with the increases last year. So, the $2 that we were able to offer helped absorb some of, of the increase that we're projecting will occur, but over time, it's something that's going to have an ongoing budget impact and creates a competition issue with Peoria Unified and outside employers that aren't in the school district system. So, we move on to the next slide. Here's our first projection that we've been working with. You'll note enrollment, current year funding, our maintenance and operations funding is based on enrollment. There's an equalization formula at base support level. We are planning on a, a projection of 325 students, a decrease in ADM, 325 students. You saw some of that information with our demographic report. So, that has reduced some of the funding that we would normally have had if we had had flat enrollment. The override is based on prior year ADM, so we're seeing an increase for that from the prior year, but then that'll go down next year. And of course, the amount that we held back last year with the new funding for fiscal year 2023, when we did our budget development, we are, we were originally working with just over $5 million of new funding, 5.6, actually. And then, we had the additional funding that was approved by the legislature in the summer. That was 15.2 million of new dollars. And you'll recall on August 25th, when we brought our additional compensation recommendations forward, we had broken out the cost of the $2 increase for, for classified, that we were offering $2 an hour increase, as well as the additional 4% on top of the 3% that our certified staff and other eligible staff received, the new hard-to-fill stipend for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and then, of course, the increase to the $48,000 new teacher salary. But we didn't spend all of the new funding, we held some of it back. We held back 3.7 million that you can see on this slide. And now, at this point, with, with the budget team, we're bringing in some of that unallocated funding to be part of the new funding that we're evaluating for, for priorities, including staff raises and, and compensation initiatives. Of course, the 3.7 that we had projected last summer would actually be lower now because of the estimate of 325 ADM decreasing for next year. And so, moving on to the next slide, we start our process early. Now, I, I can share, last year, we actually started meeting with the budget team in October, too. And memory serves me correctly, I believe we had 18 meetings last year. This year, we didn't start with the budget team in October, but we did start with our administrative staff, including principals and departments, where we asked for requests for newer one-time reoccurring expenses that would be funded either from MNO or capital priorities at the campus or department level. That would include any new position stipends or position reclassifications. So, those requests came in through November, they were evaluated through the month of December, and Cabinet has been working diligently, looking at those requests as well. And ultimately, all new requests that, that make it through our administrative review process, when it's related to a position or a reclassification or a stipend, also goes to our budget team as part of our final analysis. And then, I just highlighted, we also start our projections for new funding for the fiscal year around December, January timeframe. So, if we go to the next slide, ongoing priorities. I mentioned compression, and Mrs. Vesely, I know you're going to highlight some of these priorities that, that you've been discussing with some of our employees that you've heard from, as well as the budget team. But compression has been a topic of conversation, including every time that we make progress, progress, rather, with the salary schedule, the moment there's a change in the minimum wage, as an example, or we give raises to existing current employees, or there's new competition from other districts having pay increases, or non-district employers, that annual salary schedule needs to be evaluated. And so, the team right now is very focused on the hourly salary schedule for classified staff, because effective January 1st, when the minimum wage went from 1280 to 1385, the progress we made last year where we put some of the spread back by grade level, it collapsed. And so, that's something that our budget team's working on as well. And inflation cost of operations, the increases, we presented that. At this point, also, the aggregate expenditure limit has been addressed for this year, but we know it's an ongoing issue as we work through our budget development, because the legislature will need to take action again next year, and ultimately, there needs to be a permanent fix. But I'm going to turn the floor over to Mrs. Vesely to highlight some of the conversation with compression and some of our employee groups, work that we've, we've been doing with the budget team in that area. Mrs. Vesely, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we have been looking at several different areas that have come to human resources, either through our organizations, through our administrators, through some of the research that we conduct, and also looking at other districts and what other districts are doing. And so, some of our priorities right now are really looking at, again, is our teacher's salary comparative to other districts? We are currently sitting right about in the middle. We're, we will see other districts that are between 46,000 up to about 52,000. Some of the other areas that we're working on right now is looking at counselors, school counselors at the high school level. They have to have a master's degree, and they have always been on the certified teacher salary schedule. So, we're looking at our counselors. We're also looking at the possibility of stipends for our lead counselors. They come in and they, there is a vast amount of work that they do as the lead counselor. So, there's been a request to look at a stipend for lead counselors. Currently, they are coming in at the same level of other school counselors that are on their campuses, and they may be doing a lot of additional supports, like supporting our administrators with master scheduling, doing intakes, really doing PEDs and setting up their own schedules with their students. And so, that's an area that we're focusing in on as well. We are also looking at our ESI retirees. There's been a request from the Board for several years, as well as employees, to look at whether or not we're able to bring our employees back at a higher level. Right now, we bring employees that retire, and they go to ESI. We bring them back at about 80% of their highest, of their last salary with us. We also have to take out that alternate contribution rate, and so, it turns out to be about 75%. So, we will be looking at whether or not we're able to bring them back, possibly 90%, 95%, or 100%. Those have been some of the requests that we've heard. So, that'll be going to our budget team as well. Mrs. Myers, I, am I leaving anything else? I think those are the big areas right now.
Those are, are some of the main priorities. Also, performance pay for our certified staff and eligible Function 2100 Classroom Site Fund employees. We're looking at an increase in that area for our eligible staff, and there's work that's being done right now with our budget team in that area, as well as that banded compression that I mentioned. And that's important, because as we look at employees, especially certified teachers, zero to five years, six to 10, 11 to 15, and so on, we're now seeing unique data in the sense that we have a lot of newer employees than we used to in that zero to five range, and then the six to 20 range as well. And why that's important is we have long time, long-term employees who, for many years, were with Peoria without pay increases, where there were salary freezes. They've been with us, they've been loyal, and then, we're trying to be competitive with other districts by raising the beginning teacher's salary. And so, that increase at the beginning for those newer teachers and some of the longer-term teachers, even though we've had the targeted approach to have raises based on longevity or one-time payments based on tenure, at the end of the day, there are bands where some groups are now closer together from a compensation perspective. And so, Classroom Site Fund is, is really being viewed as a mechanism where we can strategically help to put that spread back based on the years of service that that employee has had with us.
Mrs. Myers, I did want to also include, we have been looking at other areas in relation to National Board certification. So, our teachers have a National Board certification, but there's also other areas within our school district where they have specialty certificates. So, a couple of years ago, we brought National Board certifications forward for a couple of our related service providers groups. And so, we were tasked this year to hit every department and look at what are their, or are their national certifications that are similar to the work and the requirements of our National Board certification. So, what we're going to do is we're going to bring some of those back to our budget team for a review this year, and then, we'll probably be looking at developing rubrics and bringing some possibilities of, of bringing those forward, if not this year, possibly next year, to the Board.
Thank you, Mrs. Vesely. And if we move on to the next slide, so where are we in the process? Well, we just had our most recent meeting on Monday, March 27th, and we had initially scheduled a meeting on April 10th and the 24th, but we added a meeting based on our meeting Monday. So, there's actually another meeting this upcoming Monday with the budget team to, to continue the work that we're doing. And of course, the timeline is, and the Board has asked over several years, to have the opportunity through two meetings to consider recommendations. So, the first presentation is not to ask for action, but rather, for us to bring forward the final recommendations with budget priorities, priorities, including compensation, and then, the Board takes action at that second meeting, all moving toward our proposal of our fiscal year 2024 budget, I should say, in June, with an adoption in July. So, on the next slide, key dates that are coming up? Well, we already had one key date, and that was when our Board did approve the retention stipend on March 9th. Next board meeting, we'll have presentations related to employee benefits and our insurance renewal. We do plan on April 27th. Our goal is to bring forward our recommendations for the fiscal year 2024 budget related to compensation priorities, and to ask for Board approval on May 11th. And then, again, in June, we'll propose our, propose our budget, rather, and adopt in July. And with that, that concludes the presentation. Thank you. Next slide.
Madam Clerk, if I can just jump in quickly, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Myers and Ms. Vesely for their leadership in facilitating this group, as well as the entire budget team. Our goal always in this process is to ensure that we hear all voices, right? And all voices have a, a ownership in the decisions, the recommendations that we bring, but also that our Governing Board can have the confidence that we have gone through an extensive process as we bring recommendations to you. So, thank you for that, and thank you for, for you two. Questions?
Yes, thank you for that. So, Ms. Ewing, I'll start with, oh.
I have to leave, I'm sorry.
Do you want to say anything or ask questions first?
No, thank you very much. Sorry.
It's good.
I just wanted to give him an opportunity to.
Yes, thank you.
I had one question about the, the stipends, and I'm, we're going to forget the school, but I know that I was on one of our campuses, they were talking about a possible, and I asked Carter about this, Dr. Davidson about this, about an additional stipend because of all the lifting they do with some of our special, our highest needs kiddos, and I can't remember the school.
Kenyon Sunflower?
Yes, Sunflower, thank you. So, is that something that's included in there? Were we looking at stipends for those folks?
Currently, right now, all of our special education teachers get a hard-to-fill stipend in the amount of $1,760, because special education positions have been extremely hard to fill, at least for the last five to seven years. So, there is that stipend that they are currently getting.
Okay.
Now, does that take into account the, the lifting that is part of that, their job and the job requirements for the Sunflower Center?
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hill, any comments or questions?
I guess I just had two. I was wondering, when you were talking about retirees that we might want to utilize to come back into the classroom and help out on some level, how does that work with, they're obviously reserving pension and retirement funds, how does that work? So, are they, is it a double-dipping situation, or does that get put on hold so that, you know, how does that work for taxpayers exactly?
Thank you. I'll, I'll provide initial response, and Mrs. Vesely, please add it if I miss anything. There are requirements within ASRS that when someone retires and they start drawing on that defined benefit from the state of Arizona, that in the first year, they can only work a certain number of hours and a certain number of, of weeks to, to not create an issue. And that's where third-party companies can hire that person who has left a district's employment, and they work for that third-party company, and then, they may choose after that first year to come back and to be rehired. And that's that conversation for return-to-work employees once they've left ESI. We use ESI as our third-party vendor for, for those types of scenarios, that they come back, and would it be at 75% or 90% of their prior salary? But those individuals, if they've met all of the requirements, would be able to continue receiving their ASRS payments.
Okay, so, okay, so that, that does answer my question. I wasn't sure if it was put on hold. So, basically, they would be receiving, you know, retirement funds and pension funds, plus being able to work, so they'd be able to stack. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. This is good to know, just for taxpayer purposes. And I was wondering, too, with the minimum wage, I'm trying to figure out how exactly this works, too, but maybe you can enlighten me. You said there's no cap, and so, if perchance, we get lucky and inflation either stops or slows or stalls, would that mean that the minimum wage would also do the same? Would it, would it, you know, would minimum wage from year to year, if the inflation actually halted or stopped or got better, would it just halt where it's at, too, or does it keep going up anyway?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mrs. Hill, that's, that's a great question. The statute that's in place for Prop 206 requires an annual evaluation, August to August, of, of inflation rates, Consumer Price Index, national inflation, and based on that change, that's what the new minimum wage is indexed on that would go into effect January 1st. So, if inflation comes down, and let's hope it does, it's come down a little bit, and, you know, different reports I look at, some people say, well, it might eventually come down closer to 3% over time, but it's not there yet, still, you know, around 6% or so percent. It would take some time for it to come down, but inflation's, you know, normally around 2%. That's the goal. So, you'd always have to plan on that 2% or so increase over time. But right now, it's been significantly higher because of the significant inflation that the nation's been contending with.
Okay, so, but just out of curiosity, let's say a plunge, let's say, you know, it actually got really good. Inflation was gone, things were looking good, economy's great, would, you know, would the minimum wage just hold? Or what, you know, if, I'm assuming it wouldn't go up at that point, is that right?
No, actually, it's indexed on inflation, so unless inflation was zero?
Oh, all right, okay. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to figure it all out. So, we are looking at increasing minimum wage every single year, no matter what, pretty much.
Yes.
Shoot, okay. Well, all right, well, I just wanted to get a, a grasp of that, because it affects, obviously, our schools, but everybody is impacted by that. Like you're saying, with the compression issues and everything else, you know, it's just rough to have to deal with the minimum wage issue. So, okay, I'm glad you let me know how that's working and how we're going to have to make it work for us as well, because that's, that's going to be an ongoing problem.
And, and Mrs. Hill, if I may add, districts, employers, in general, anyone who receives funding from the state of Arizona, they didn't receive an additional funding amount for this requirement with Prop 206. So, the requirement went into place, and employers had to find a mechanism to pay for the required increase in salary.
Exactly, right. Okay, well, thank you so much, I appreciate you explaining that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the great presentation that you guys both worked on. I appreciate it. I did just have, I guess, one question on the priorities slide. I think it was just barely, yeah, right there. With, with regards to, I've heard from some of the schools that I've visited, some teachers are concerned about, obviously, compression. I definitely have heard that, and I've heard that some teachers will be leaving if that doesn't go up, so I think that's a big priority. But I also have heard that the class sizes are difficult on the teachers. And so, I wanted to know if there is a priority for classroom aides to kind of offset the class sizes, so that they can work with students that are needing more help in the classroom, and then- needing more help in the classroom, and then the teacher can continue the classwork.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, members of the governing board. The district goes through a staffing process each year, and one of the impacts that we've had in recent years is vacancies that we can't fill. And I know Mrs. Vesely can speak to that. So that can oftentimes impact a class size. We do look at, as part of the request that I highlighted, that schools and departments can initiate in October if there's a new position that's identified as being necessary to address a concern like class size or vacancies that aren't being filled. You know, is there a contracted service that can fill the gap or other mechanisms? And before I ask Mrs. Vesely to add to that, I also want to state that with these priorities and to align back to the conversation with the prior presentation when it comes to grants or grant-funded positions, our capital improvement plan process, our strategic plan, our perspectives that we address each year, especially with our capital improvement plan, we talked about compensation, but the budget development as a whole, we're looking at funding sources to meet a variety of priorities and needs, be it carry forward a grant or new funding. So I just wanted to highlight that as well, in case you had a question in that area. Mrs. Vesely?
I'm just going to jump in quick. So one of the things that you've heard is that we really take a multi-year approach. And we really look at not only the work we're doing right here, or what our priorities are, what our priorities were last year, what they will be next year. And so although you, you know, mentioned as you were out visiting, and there's priorities that are out there, our team puts together that group. And class size is always something that we're thinking about, and how we support teachers in the classroom. So although you might not see something, right, that you've heard that there's a potential need for, that doesn't mean, right, once we're able to address some of these things and we start to look to the future, then we can change our priorities and add to our priorities and take things off. But that budget process is very cyclical. And so as, right, as it comes around, and we do work over the, you know, one, two, three years, then we come back and we revisit some of those things. So there might be some areas of need that we will be addressing in the future.
So with regards to, like, I see the grants up there, and you were talking about that. I know that the grant that I was speaking before of, the title 4A, I believe it was, has the opportunity for security measures, which could range from cameras to locked doors and things like that. I know that it's supposed to be, you can start applying, I think it was July 1st, for the next fiscal year 2024. Is that something that we're going to look at? Because I think with priorities up there, I think all of those are important, but our biggest priority right now is making sure that the kids are safe in the schools, and that includes the buildings. Just from walking through Vistancia and having the locked door, you know, Ms. Bennett had to pull money out of her own pocket to try to help with that. And I think that that's, you know, I think that's great. And Cotton Bowl Elementary, you know, talking to the principal there, wanting those same features. So I think that that needs to be something as a priority up there for the budget.
And just as a reminder, this is just the work, right? These are just the priorities for our budget team, right? So that's the small group that is working towards compensation. We have teams all across the district that prioritize some of the areas that you're talking about. And that's what we, each year, when we go in and we do our analysis and we identify those needs, but this, these priorities are simply for the budget team that is focused on compensation.
Okay, all right. All right, anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay. Yeah, try hurry. Okay, well, I need a motion to adjourn the study session at, anybody know what time it is? I can't, six seventeen, is that what it says? Six seventeen PM. I move to adjourn. I will second.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, team.